Good evening, everyone. I'm Tracy Whitfield, Springfield City Councilor-at-Large, and I'm pleased and blessed to be here with all of you today. You took the first step on getting the information from the assessor's office, and so you should take a bow for that or clap for yourselves. Thank you. The info session is designed to educate you on the services that the assessor's office provide. It's not really a one-on-one complaint session, but we do have surveys that you could write down if you have an individual problem or concern that you want to issue, you want to talk about. Write that down with your information, and the appropriate parties will get back to you. So before we start the program, there's just a few individuals that I would like to thank personally for supporting me through this whole initiative, my first initiative as a city councilor. The Honorable Mayor Dominique Sarno, who couldn't be here today because of previous engagements. My colleagues, Jesse Letterman, City Councilor-at-Large. Please stand up, Jesse. Ward 5 Councilor Marcus Williams. And Ward 1 Councilor Adam Gomez, who had an emergency and couldn't be here, but he was planning on it. He'll be at tomorrow's session. I would also like to thank my campaign team. I need these gyms to stand up. Come on, campaign team, stand up. I wouldn't be able to do anything without them, so I thank you guys so much. Focus Springfield for accepting my ask. All right, give it up for Focus Springfield. To record the session, it's important for them to record the sessions for folks that are unable to make it today because of physical inabilities, or they just couldn't make it for whatever reason. They still should have the opportunity to get the same information. And then to Reverend Dr. Otto White. Please stand. Originally, I had another location in mind, but it fell through. So I was like, what would be a good place? Because this is the community that I wanted to start these info sessions in. And I was like, maybe the Dunbar. So I went to Pastor White, and he was like, "Yeah." And I was like, "Okay." Everybody said "yes" so far. And then I thought we were going to have it in the gym. So when he said we could use this lovely space, I was like, "All right." And then, on top of that, he said, "Oh, we're going to be able to live video streaming on Facebook." And I was like, "Yes, that's a double M-E." I thank you and Mount Zion staff for helping put this together. And just on another note about Dr. White, is that he is a background campaign team person. I wasn't supposed to tell anybody, but I want y'all all to know how proud I am because you need that grounded person when you feel like pulling your hair out to bring the Lord into perspective. What would Jesus do? And so, he's my go-to guy for that. And then, our city assessor, Richie Allen. So when I went to Richie, I mean, everybody said "yes." I was like, "This is good. I am going to ask for everything I want," because everybody said "yes." And so, I went to him, and he was like, "Oh yeah, I'll do it." And then he had moments of concern. He was like, "Wait a minute. That timeframe, the tax bills are going up. Values are going up." Now, I just want to say that the city councilors did not increase the tax rate. Thank you, city councilors, for residents. For residents. Businesses, we had to. Some don't even live in Springfield, so we put the burden on them a little bit. But, the values did go up. The property's values went up in Springfield. So, there's still maybe an increase in the tax bills. And he'll explain that a little bit when he goes up. But thank you, city councilors, for the great job that we did together. So this is a perfect time to segue into what this session is and what it's not. So we are here to learn the information and learn how to navigate the process of the assessor's office. During the questions and answers section, portion of the program, if you have a question, there's a second row right here next to the mic. You could just sit there and then just wait your turn. If you have a question, that's where we would like you to sit. If you have any personal problems that you need assistance with, there are the surveys, like I mentioned. Please fill those out and give them to my campaign team, and then the appropriate party will contact you about your individual concern. If there's enough time at the end, Richie has said that he would stay and speak to folks on a one-on-one basis. So, we hope that that can happen. So, I'm going to turn the program over, but I have to give one more plug to Ms. Z. Johnson. Can you please stand? Oh, please stand. So, Ms. Z. Johnson is the Outreach Coordinator for Elders Affairs in Springfield. She has brought information on elder affairs and senior services in the senior centers. So please stop and get the information from her, even if it's not for you, if it's for someone else, a loved one. Because sometimes seniors are at home lonely, and it's an opportunity for them to get out and mingle with folks, get exercise, get the nutrition that they need, because the senior centers provide wonderful meals. And so, we all need some help sometime, and we need to work as a community to get the information out. So if you just know someone, or someone crossed your mind, just stop by and give them the information, and she has all that for you.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for the welcome from Council Whitfield, Minister White. It's nice to be back in the Dunbar. I was actually on the board of the Dunbar Community Center about 30 years ago. So I'm very happy to be here and to see this wonderful facility with such a great history being put to use by this congregation. And I come here for basketball games. I was here about three weeks ago. And it's just such an instrumental part of the community. And it's so vibrant. And as it was coming in, I was holding the door for some youngsters on the way out. It was just great to see so many different generations and so many different people here. So, it's great to be back here at the Dunbar. So, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to speak on property taxes this evening. I'm going to keep my remarks general. As Council Whitfield indicated, I'm happy to spend some time after the formal program if people have individual concerns. I've done a lot of these over the years, and I've always found that those are individual problems, issues, disputes, are best handled one-on-one. And it allows the general program to flow in a smooth fashion and convey a lot of information to a larger audience. But again, I'm happy to speak to people after if you have individual questions or concerns. So, property taxes are never popular, are they? So, I've been doing it a long time. And I'm always struck at the intensity sometimes that people bring to the question. And I understand that. It can be a very expensive cost on households and can be a large portion of your income. And, you know, I often reflect that we don't really have the opportunity to question our utility bills, whether it's electric, gas, telephone, cellphone, you know, home heating oil, any number of household bills. We're consuming something, and we're paying for it, often paying a lot of money for it. But you don't really have the opportunity in any kind of substantive way to dispute those. But when those property tax bills hit the first week of January, we hear from a lot of people. And people I generally don't hear from in the course of the year. They find their way to City Hall, or they call us, they email us. And we do our best to address those questions and concerns. And so, in the spirit of providing information, I'd just like to kind of go through the system. And it's a heavily regulated system. You know, a lot of laws and regulations that require us to do what we do. But I'll try to make it as well-understood as I can. So, we bill four times a year. The first two bills, which are called preliminary bills, those bills come out. The first one comes out around July 1st. It's due unpayable August 1st. The second one, we mail late September, and that is due November 1st. So it's not until the third quarter bill, the one that we just mailed a couple of weeks ago, that that's the first bill of the four that states a value, states the full tax for the year. And that's the one bill that you can actually dispute and challenge the value, or the classification, as the case may be. And I'll state this again in the course of my remarks, but February 1st, which is a Friday, February 1st is the last day to file an application, what we call an abatement application, to dispute the value or the classification of the property. So just keep that in mind, February 1st, if you are intending to do that and preparing to do that. So, when we mail that third quarter bill in late December, it's the culmination of a lengthy process that really starts back in February or March every year. And in the assessor's office, there's three of us on the board. We're full-time members of the board. We have three individuals who are in the field every day, visiting properties, knocking on doors and collecting information. And then we have several people in the office who are performing a variety of tasks, capturing deeds that are filed at the Registry of Deeds, talking to people on the phone, people at the counter, dealing with excise bills. We also handle over 100,000 excise bills a year, motor vehicle excise. But the property tax bill is developed over, as I say, starting in February and March, and generally concluding in November or even early December. And what it represents is the assessor's best estimate of the market value of the property. And that estimate is determined through a lot of research and through applying a lot of information. And essentially, in the case of residential property, and I really can tailor my comments to residential property. I certainly can talk about commercial and industrial property and larger apartment blocks. But I'm going to speak mostly about house bills, homeowner tax bills, and how we develop those. So, for each of the 33,000 one-, two-, and three-family homes we have in the city, over 26,000 of those are single families. For each of those properties, we have a lot of information about the physical structure, the year it was built, the size of the structure, measured in terms of square footage, the number of stories, number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms, the condition of the property, the amount of land on which it sits, whether there's a garage, whether there's a deck, finished basement, et cetera, et cetera. So, all of that property is maintained on our public records. And those are now what we call the Property Record Card. Each property has a Property Record Card. And I have one with me. And those are available online. If you have access to a computer, you can certainly look up online what the assessor's records indicate for your property. So that's really the foundation of the determination of market value for your property. How do we get that information? Well, we have visited your property probably numerous times in the last 40 or 50 years. We had a major collection of data back in the late '70s and early '80s, in which we hired an outside firm that hired a lot of people, and they visited every single property in the city and verified, collected, measured, and verified what we had on the properties at that point, and maintained that data. Since then, we've essentially had a field staff, three individuals currently. And they're in the field every day, visiting properties. We conduct what's called a cyclical inspection program in which we're trying to get access to each residential property in the city at least once every nine years. And, you know, when we have over 33,000 houses, you know, we do our best to maintain accurate and current records. So that's happening on a cyclical basis. When we are going to visit a certain area and perform a cyclical inspection, we'll mail out letters to that area to let people know the name of the individual from the assessor's office who will visit, and the purpose of the visit. So we do those cyclical inspections. We also do, we'll visit properties that have sold and spend a lot of time looking at properties that have sold, trying to get access to those, speaking to people involved in the sale, speaking to the brokers, the buyers, anyone who can educate us and provide us with the information we need to understand whether a sale qualifies as a valid sale or not. A valid sale meaning something, you know, a transaction that occurred between two unrelated parties, something that was, the property was advertised on the open market, and, you know, there may have been a negotiation involved, as is typically the case with people buying property. And if, after the inspection process and the screening process, we've determined that the sale qualifies as valid, then we use it as a comparable sale price in determining the values of other similar properties in that section of the city. So, instances of properties that wouldn't qualify or transfers that wouldn't qualify as valid sales would be, if it's between family members, if it's a foreclosure typically, you know, a bank or a party is just looking to unload the property, not necessarily obtain the fair market value for it. If there's a court order, maybe a sale from an estate or divorce is involved or something of that sort. So there's, and these are all regulations that we apply based on the state law and state regulations that are under which we have to comply. So, when we have a whole collection of valid sales, and that process will take us generally into the middle or late summer. And what we're doing is, the valid sales would be covering a period of time. In this case, for the bills that just went out, we looked at valid sales from July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2018. So really, we're looking at two years of sales and just trying to determine the best evidence of market value within each neighborhood in the city. For assessing purposes, we organize the city into about 47 neighborhoods. I brought with me information tonight for three of those neighborhoods, essentially Alt Hill, Upper Hill, and the Bay Area. So, I can share that with you later on, where I have sale prices and what we've, for specific addresses, and what we've assessed those properties at. So, when we have determined through this research and this investigation in the field what the valid sales are, we then can proceed to using that information to estimate the value of every other property in the city. So, if you have a single family, and it's a ranch, and it was built in the 1950s, or you have a two-family, and it was built in the 1920s, and, you know, whatever the style, age, size of the property might be, we're trying to, our computer program is selecting, for your property, the four or five sales that were most similar to yours in terms of their style, number of living units, age, size, condition, et cetera. It's the same process that a bank would do if someone were seeking a mortgage or a home equity loan, or a realtor would do if you were preparing your property for sale, and, you know, doing the same kind of market research that we use. So, that brings us to, as I say, late summer, early fall, commercial, industrial property, and personal property, business personal property, that is. That's, we're doing that at the same time. But most of our staff's time and effort is really devoted to residential property. Out of 44,000 taxable parcels in the city, 33,000 are one-, two-, or three-family homes. So, we really try to make sure that we have the best evidence and can make, you know, intelligent estimates of value. So, sometimes, we don't have good comps. Just, there haven't been transactions. Good comps don't exist. That hasn't been our problem in recent years. It was a problem, you know, several years ago when most of the activity in certain neighborhoods of the city was involving foreclosed properties or short sales. And those really became the dominant activity in the market. So, we've been fortunate. The market conditions have improved. There's more buyers. And mortgage rates have been more reasonable in the last three, four years. So, we've been able to gather plenty of valid sales to help us make those estimates. So, once we have those estimates complete, and we have to submit those to the State Department of Revenue, all 351 cities and towns have to comply with state revenue department regulations, proving that within each neighborhood, within each style, within each class, age of property, et cetera, we are in compliance with the statistical requirements. It sounds very technical, and frankly, it is very technical. But I mention it because that's the background that you don't see. And you don't realize that, you know, we're really just trying to, we, the assessors, are trying to reflect the market and what's happening in your neighborhood. If we don't, we won't be mailing tax bills because we won't be in compliance with the State Revenue Department regulations. And that would prompt a real financial crisis for the city. So, we're obligated to follow those regulations and apply them with the best evidence that we have. So, as Council Whitfield indicated, the tax rate did not rise this year. And actually, it's been, it's been in the 1960 range for a few years. It's been pretty level. Councilors have been very sensitive to that. And when a lot of communities were going over $20 on residential, Springfield has held the line. And I know that every consideration that the city councilors, all 13 of them, can offer to the homeowner, they're certainly, you know, having impact on me and others involved in the process to give the homeowner every consideration of fairness and accuracy that we can, as opposed to the business community. So, the tax rate vote occurs generally in early December. This year was late November. And, you know, we've tried to do it earlier to allow people to plan and avoid too much confusion with the holidays and so forth. But, so once that vote happens and the Revenue Department certifies it, then the collector, treasurer, and the information technology people work to make sure that the bills are mailed on a timely basis by the end of December. So, then the, then reality hits for a lot of people. And certainly, you know, the bills can have, you know, a large effect on a household budget. We're well aware of that. And we're sensitive to that. We try to educate people as to what their options are. I brought with me this evening a lot of information pertaining to different forms of tax relief, whether it's tax relief offered through the assessor's office at the local level on the basis of age or financial circumstance, or if you're a widow or widower or a veteran. I have all that information with me. I have copies, so people can take those with them. I have some applications. It's all available on the city website. Those applications are not due. We've received most of them. You know, we've received hundreds. And actually, when we mail the bills each year, the people that receive those forms of relief, we're already deducting from their bill the relief that's due them, to which they're entitled. And that is, results in over a half million dollars being deducted from the bills in general that are mailed at the end of December. So it's already credited to those households that file those applications and that we verify as qualifying. But for those of you who don't receive those and think you may qualify, you certainly have until April 1st to file those applications, whether it's veterans, people 70 years of age or over who meet certain financial criteria, widows or widowers of any age who meet certain financial criteria, blind, and, you know, there are a host of ways to qualify. So, that's at the local level. I want to mention a very important and often overlooked part of the state personal income tax system. About, I don't know, maybe 20 years ago, as the legislature, our state senators and state reps became familiar with how property taxes were becoming a burden to people who were, to use our colloquialism, they were house-rich but cash-poor. People of limited income, you know, maybe lower moderate income, but they owned their house. And, you know, have lived in the house for decades and certainly want to remain in the house. So, following in the example of a few other states, Massachusetts created what's called the Circuit Breaker Tax Relief. And in order to receive it, you have to file a personal income tax return. But the Circuit Breaker is really aimed at those households that have limited income, but a tax bill plus a water and sewer bill that presents some real challenges and some real burdens for that household. And they may not, they may or may not qualify for the local relief that's available through the assessor's office, but the Circuit Breaker essentially works as follows. If your annual property tax, we'd be talking about calendar 18 now, if the property tax that you paid during calendar 18 plus half of your water and sewer paid during calendar 18, if that total, just for the sake of discussion, I'll say it's $3,500, those two combined. And let's say your household income is $30,000. So 10% of the household income would be $3,000. And there's a lot of families in this city. And I'm a lifelong resident, graduate of the public schools, a very proud resident of the city. There's a lot of families that, you know, certainly have income well below $30,000, may own their house, and may encounter the expense, you know, that I'm sketching out here as an example. So, if the $3,000, which is 10% of their income, is $500 less than their annual tax plus half the water and sewer, net $500 functions as a credit. There's a lot of households that don't file personal income tax returns because they don't qualify. Their income isn't high enough. But in order to get this credit, you have to file it. And if, you'll simply get a check back from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The last year for which I've been able to get information was calendar 15. So it's three years ago. And I prefer to think that the number has grown since then. But the Revenue Department doesn't have that yet. But in calendar 15, there were... But in calendar 15, there were 1,273 households in Springfield that qualified for an average of $747 in Circuit Breaker credit. It was about $950,000 that came back either as credit or as refund checks to nearly 1,300 households. So, if you're not familiar with it, I'm happy to speak to you after the session, but it's an often overlooked opportunity for tax relief. It's done all through the state personal income tax process, nothing at the local assessor's office. So, you have to file a state return. But, you know, there's a lot of people, a lot of households in Springfield that have received it over the years, and I just, at every opportunity, I just try to make people aware of it. So, let me get to the overvalue application, so, which is the one that's due February 1st. So, the assessors, by law, we're putting a value on your tax bill, and that value is supposed to represent fair market value, technically full and fair cash value as of January 1st, 2018. So, we're always looking backwards, by law, and it reflects whatever was on the property physically on June 30th, and we take whatever was there June 30th, 2018, and put it in the market conditions as of January 1st of 18, and that's the value that is the estimate that's on your tax bill. Over 33,000 houses, I like to think we do a great job with the data that we have and the resources available to us, but, you know, sometimes our estimates aren't perfect, and that's why we have the overvalue application process. We have an information sheet, kind of an instruction sheet, that we share with people if they're planning to submit one. And the, essentially, the burden of proof is on the homeowner. We've got a lot of information on your property, a lot of information on sales in your neighborhood, and that's what we've used to develop the estimate. What you need to do is educate us about your property, how it may be our information isn't accurate, maybe there are problems with the interior of the house if we haven't been inside it in quite some time, there may be some deterioration there, or some conditions there that are relevant to the fair market value. And that's one aspect of it. The other is, if you're aware of sales that you think are, you know, the valid sales that we're using that are relevant, or, you know, that, how your house compares to those, if you have knowledge of those. But, so, those two questions are questions that we, as I'm reviewing applications, I try to understand, one, do our records reflect reality? And two, is the applicant giving us information or that we didn't previously had about some sales in that neighborhood, or some conditions in that neighborhood? So, I do want to note that when you file, we send out a letter and request an inspection of your property. And that's really to verify that our information is accurate. A lot of times, we find that it is, other times, we find that it isn't. And, you know, so, we'll make those changes, and sometimes that can result in an adjustment, in an abatement, reduction of your tax. So, the date you file, from that date, count three months, and that's, we, the Board of Assessors, just three individuals, we need to make a decision on or before the lapse of the three-month period. And during that three months, we're typically, you know, requesting an inspection, and looking for any information, photos, any information whatsoever that reflects on the fair market value. I'm trying to think if there's anything I haven't covered in a general way. I'd be happy to take some general questions, if there are any.
So, we're just going to ask that, if you have a question to sit in this area, it's with the white paper, and we'll get to the questions. I just wanted to quickly clarify the Circuit Breaker tax, so, I mean, the Circuit Breaker credit, I'm sorry. You have to be 65 or older by December 31st of last year. You can get up to $1,100 back. I'm a tax professional, so that's my small business. And, so, it's a senior credit, and I love helping seniors that don't necessarily have to file, get this credit, because it's something that can help them pay their property tax. So, if you don't know about it, if you haven't heard about it, you could see the assessor or myself and get more information on that. So, at this time, we'll ask you to come to the mic and ask your question.
I'm rising to ask a question we've been talking about in the neighborhood for quite a while. You mentioned, Mr. Allen, that the condition is a factor in value, which of course, as a real estate broker, I'm familiar with the condition as a factor in value, but the question arises in McKnight, because, and I don't know about other historic districts, but when we were doing the canvassing to support the historic district formation, which had been in '73, '74, '75 period, the city planning department, if I understood correctly, and I was at a couple of meetings, told people that the city had adopted a standard under which, if they restored their houses, in other words, they didn't add a bathroom, but they painted, for example, the house, they kept it up, that they would not be penalized. And a lot of people supported the historic district based on the idea that they would not be penalized for good maintenance, rather exempting additions or changes to the nature of the property. And I'm wondering if that was something that was adopted and has since been abandoned, or if people misunderstood that, because there's a considerable amount of, as I understood, the idea was that a house in better shape is worth more than a house that's not in better shape. And that, that had been felt that by someone, that it was a restraint on maintenance and general upkeep, that people were concerned that they were going to be taxed at a higher rate if they kept the house up better. And that to prevent people from restraining their impulse to keep the house up better, some, I'm not sure abatement's the right term, but some regulation had been adopted, or practice had been adopted by the assessor's office, that would prevent people from being penalized for property, for good property management.
Okay. I have to tell you that that is really contrary to the whole notion of what, of full and fair cash value is, you know, that the underpinnings of the whole property taxation system is to reflect differences, and to reflect market value as determined by market forces, which are the consequence of individual decisions and individual transactions. So, no, I guess the short answer is there is no regulation suggesting that we, we, the assessor's office, would not recognize any physical changes, or improvements, or better condition. On the contrary, we would. We rate each property for its physical condition and for its market appeal. And, so, those are very relevant considerations to determining market value. If that happened with respect to, if I understood the genesis of this, back in the 1970s, with respect to the formation of the historic district at McKnight, that, interestingly enough, the 1970s was before 100% full and fair cash value came into effect. It was the early 80s when that came into effect. And that was the culmination, the 100% valuation was the culmination of a decade of court decisions, which indicated the Constitution requires us to treat everyone alike, on a uniform system, if you will. And if we were to say, well, all these well-maintained properties are being treated alike with all these poorly maintained properties, that just doesn't seem to be reflecting reality. So, that's just not the case legally, constitutionally.
But someone might have said that in the 70s.
I was in junior high at Van Sickle in 1973. It wasn't me. So, but I do appreciate the question. I know you have a lot of history, and I've always been a concerned citizen, so, first I've heard it, but that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay. My question, one of my questions, and then after, I would like to sit down with you on a couple of things. When you have a change of classification, do you notify the owner?
Change of classification, to give examples, so I can just explain it better.
Well, I have two or three of my tax bills that have changed the classification from, like, 131 to, I don't know, there were a couple of different things, and I was not notified.
Okay, so, let me, yeah, let me address that. So, on your tax bill, there is a, in the property description part of the bill, where we list the location of the property, the amount of land area associated with it, and the class, and then the value. So, the class code is something that is a state department of revenue system. So, a 101 is a single-family, a 102 is a residential condo, anything starting with a 1 is residential, 103 is a mobile home, 104 is a two-family, 105 is a three-family, et cetera. Anything with a 13, there are always three digits, if it's a 130, 131, 132, then...
One of them's a 3.
Yeah, so, that's vacant land. 130 would be buildable vacant land. 131 is something that's potentially buildable, and 132 would generally be backland that's got some conditions that prevent it from being buildable.
My question is, I've had some change, and I was not notified, other than seeing in the tax bill, and what is, should I have been notified of these changes?
We're not required to notify you? Did you notice any particular change in the value of the property?
Yeah, I think they, some went up and some went down. Yeah.
Well, again, if our field staff observes conditions that suggest that, you know, that class code should be changed, then they'll do that, you know, typically with review. But, you know, we're always trying to maintain accurate data, and sometimes, you know, for instance, with vacant land, we've, there are a lot of properties, I'm thinking out in Pine Point, some sections of Forest Park, where we had properties listed as 132s. They weren't, didn't have frontage, they didn't have, you know, water and sewer connections, utility connections, et cetera, so they're 132s. Well, lo and behold, the, you know, developer, builder came along and put in the street, and, you know, all of a sudden, those became 131s or 130s. So, you know, by creating different conditions in an area in response to the market, will certainly change the classification.
Mine have a change in over half a century.
Yeah. You know, it may be that our records weren't reflecting the reality. So, without knowing exactly what you're talking about, and I'm happy to speak to you after about that. Yeah.
And I being 80, a disabled vet, widow, a few other things, I guess I was not aware of some of these discounts.
So, I'll just mention the veterans for a minute. So, if you're a veteran with a minimum of a 10% disability, and there's no requirement for financial qualifications for veterans, just really has to do with your years of service, years of residency, either before or after serving in the armed forces. But, you know, the 10% disability or greater gets $400 off of their tax bill.
Is that retroactive?
You have to file every year.
I just got my Vietnam bonus after 63 years, so.
No, you have to file every year. We've got several hundred households that have been getting it every year, so you have to file every year. We can't go retroactively, no. So...
I have some other...
But the VA, the VA sends out those letters with notifying you of disability, if that is your personal circumstance, and I don't need to know, but if, the VA typically in those letters indicates you may qualify for local property tax relief. So, we see those letters every day of the week, when people file. Yeah, so, but thank you. Thank you. General questions, anything I can clarify? Hi.
Hi, good evening. Got a few questions, if you don't mind.
So, this, just to be just clear, this is just assessor's questions. He's not going to know about the trash fee and things like that. We appreciate the information, but if, we just want to keep these questions for the assessor. Not you personally, but I'm just saying overall. Thank you.
I just wanted to know, how accurate would you say the values or the assessed value, market and assessed value are of the properties that the municipality provides?
How accurate?
Yes.
Well, if they're not accurate, then we won't be able to mail tax bills. The state revenue department requires each city and town to document that we're reflecting, that the values are reflecting the selling prices, and, you know, within certain, you know, ranges of 100% valuation. So, if, the valid sales must be accurate. And again, we don't have...
Saying that, you know, sometimes you get disputes on the value of properties, so just wasn't sure if there was any kind of research on, you know, how off the municipality was?
How off in what?
How, how often the municipality might be off on the assessed value of the properties?
Well, again, if they're off, they're not going to be able to function financially. Our, so, the most recent bill, that went out a couple of weeks ago, reflects sales from July of 2016 through the end of June of 2018. So, within each of 47 assessing zones in the city, we're validating the sales to make sure that we've got the best evidence, and that, you know, family sales or the like. And then, those, the new values have to reflect those selling prices, you know, within a few percentage points typically. Sometimes they're a little bit higher, a little bit lower, but if we can't comply with the state requirements, then we're not going to be able to mail tax bills.
Okay. And a follow-on question to that is, you mentioned that the city uses some outside sources or entities to obtain some information to basically get those values on properties. Would you be able to share what, who those companies are, or entities are?
So, we have three field staff, so we're collecting the physical data out in the field every day. We're getting deeds from the registry of deeds at the courthouse. And residential property, there's a firm that we've been using for close to 40 years, and they're very experienced, and, you know, besides Springfield, they're doing Chicopee, Northampton, Pittsfield, very, and so that's Tyler, is the name of that firm, Tyler Technologies. And the software that we use is Tyler software, and we don't, we didn't create our own software. So, they're the largest mass appraisal consulting firm in the country. So, and they're traded on the New York Stock Exchange, and they're very, very large, and, you know, we work with the same individual there for a number of years, so they're, make sure they're familiar with Springfield.
Good to know. Good to know, thank you. Another question, for those getting to real estate investing, are there any title companies or real estate attorneys that you would recommend?
Oh, I could never recommend anyone as a public official. So, you know, there's a lot of capable people in Springfield, and, yeah, so, thank you.
Right, I didn't think about that.
Thank you. Just very briefly, taxes, property taxes in Springfield just went over $200 million for the first time, and the city budget, however, is closer to $700 million. So taxes fund about 30% of the budget, property taxes. The rest is generally aid from the state government, local aid.
Any other questions? Because I have one. It's more about vehicles, though. Do you collect on that?
Motor vehicle excise?
Yes.
Yeah.
So my question is, like, when you sell the car, sometimes you still get the bill? I just paid it, but can I get that money back? I'm like, no, just went, just like he wants the money back. But how does that process work? Because I've gotten the bill and I just paid it so that I could get a license or whatever. I didn't feel like going through all that, so can you explain that a little bit?
Right. So motor vehicle excise is administered through the assessor's office, and we get our information from the registry of motor vehicles, that's the, who owns the prop, you know, who owns the vehicle, the value of the vehicle, and the mailing address for the bills, et cetera. So we mail over 100,000 excise bills annually, and they go out in stages. The first one, what we call the Commitment One, is generally about 80,000 bills, and, you know, can be a total of, say, seven, eight million dollars of revenue to the city. When that bill goes out, as it will in the next few weeks, then that generally results in a lot of people visiting City Hall. Right, Sylvia?
Right.
And if they are ready to pay the bill, they go see Sylvia, if they have questions or sold the property, you know, no longer own the vehicle, you know, any number of, there are exemptions related to excise bills as well, not directly analogous to real estate, but, so we get a lot of traffic. We do over 5,000 abatements a year on excise, generally because someone's just sold the vehicle. It's whoever owns it on January 1st, 2019, as per the registry of motor vehicle records, that's where the bill's going to. And so, you know, if you, if you owned it then, but you sold it in February, now, the bills will probably go out around early February and generally be due a month later. You know, if you've sold the property or sold the vehicle, then certainly get in touch with us at the assessor's office. Read what's available on the website in terms of the documentation that you need, bill of sale, plate receipt, gets very technical, and, you know, we're audited on how we handle those transactions, so can be very frustrating for people, but we do our best to answer every individual situation. They can accumulate, because again, it's approximately 80,000 bills that are being mailed, and, you know, 1% of that would be 800 people, so, you know, 800 people descending on City Hall, either at the assessor's office or the collector's office, in a 30-day period can be a lot of traffic, so. But keep your documentation. If you ever sell a vehicle, keep your documentation, put it in a little file folder, a little envelope, whatever, and it may save you some excise later on.
So I see that these information sessions are valuable and needed because there's other questions about other services that the city offers, so we're going to try to get in touch, well, we will get in touch with those departments, Health and Human Services, the Parks Department, Parks and Facilities, so folks can know how they can, if they want to have an event, how they can obtain a park or things like that, or if there's any problems in the park. So we'll have more information sessions probably each quarter, but I thank you all for coming out and spending about an hour, hour and 15 minutes with us today. And Richie said he'll stay for a little bit longer for individual questions or concerns, so please utilize that time, and if anyone has any questions for me, I'm here. Marcus is here too, so you can ask him as well. Thank you and have a good night.